Okay, back to the study session, or the special city council meeting. Discussion item, managing public spaces. Acting City Manager Jason Loveland will introduce the discussion item.
I thought we moved it.
All right, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Sorry, I wasn't in my chair yet.
I know. Hi.
Just real briefly, to start this item, we're here to provide some follow-up and introduce some new strategies. This is follow-up from a conversation that we had September of 2022. And during that time, there's been several strategies that have been implemented and continue to progress as we move forward. There's been a cross, you know, departmental team, including legal, that's collaborated on, you know, identifying different solutions to various ways to manage our public spaces. A couple of things from a background perspective that we have, really it started, like I said, in 2022, discussing just the perceptions or the feelings that folks were having within the community, in parks and shopping centers and their safety, you know, concerns with drug and alcohol use in public, and then, you know, what kind of strategies could the city, you know, implement to help and provide resources, you know, to those concerns? A handful of those items are shown here on this slide, as far as regular cleaning, relocating different programs, and trying to really collaborate, you know, with the county and other entities in the area, you know, to help really support some programs or just ways to help the community see and feel a difference with things that they had been presented to all of us. So we will skip ahead to 2023, and we've provided some new considerations. There's eight strategies that have been identified. We've updated a matrix that was provided in the packet that has much more detail, I think, than we're going to talk about tonight, but for a reference as an update to what was provided in 2022. The next thing, I just want to say is, being kind of new into this role and being to collaborate with the team, I just want to kind of give a shout-out before we even get started, to say, being a part of the team and hearing, you know, some of their conversations and focus on really helping the community, hearing the community, and kind of trying to bring the best things that we have forward that are within our wheelhouse, has been kind of a neat thing for me to experience, kind of, as I said, being new to this role. So with that, I will turn it over to our team to go through some slides, and we're looking for feedback and conversation throughout the presentation, but I will turn it over first to Jessica Holtz, our crew manager.
Thank you. Mayor and council members, thanks for having me tonight. So in 2022, we looked at our drug use and paraphernalia, and we agreed to implement stricter enforcement of existing ordinances, and this has gone into place. All officers are using stricter enforcement as they respond to calls that are based on drug use and paraphernalia. Some of this effectiveness has been limited, simply due to the length of time that it takes to see any fallout or consequences with those citations. So for those who are listening, if a person is cited, then they're going to be issued a court hearing, and then if they don't make it to that court, they will be continued to be reissued court dates, or a warrant for their arrest will go into play. If they are arrested, then most likely if it's going back to the original charge, they might be held for a matter of a couple of hours to a day before they're let out on a recognizance bond. So that's typically the way that we see drug use and paraphernalia charges go, unless it's elevated to a more higher use or more paraphernalia. It depends on the amount that the person has with them. Another tactic that we are looking at as a city is what's called the emergency commitment and involuntary commitment process, and this is a process that is written into our state statutes. An emergency commitment is one that is approved through a detox center. So it's a clinically appropriate response to someone who is living with substance use disorder, and instead of just citing them, you can bring them to a detox center. The detox center will agree to hold them for up to five days if they are a danger to themselves, others, due to their incapacitation because of their substance use disorder. During those five days, you can use that time for a petitioner to petition the Behavioral Health Administration, for them to go ahead and bring it to the DA's office and do a civil process where the person would be court-ordered to participate in involuntary rehab programs. The person is then evaluated every 90 days and can be held for up to two years. We are using our city attorney to look at the effectiveness and the legalities of who can be a petitioner and what are best practices across the state.
You want to advance it?
Sure.
So when we last spoke about this issue, probably towards, in fall of 2022, this was, you asked me to research whether this was possible, to somehow regulate shopping carts in the right way. The short version is, it is. It has been upheld in various jurisdictions. It is difficult, however, to impact businesses outside of North Glenn whose shopping carts end up in North Glenn. But to the extent that shopping carts are abandoned in North Glenn, we can certainly enforce and look at ordinances that address the visual impact and the real-world impact of having shopping carts in our rights-of-way.
So this next strategy that we're putting forward to for consideration is the Problem Identification and Intervention Team. And this is really taking what we have implemented as a pilot project here on the civic campus of the clean, what we've kind of been calling that cleanup program, where we post and say, on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, between these specific hours, Crew's going to come through, identify if there's anyone that's camping, that's here on site, that needs resources, that needs notification, and then notifying park staff if there's anything that needs to be cleaned up and removed from the site. It's a staff-intensive program utilizing between, it varies week by week or day by day, and has been in place now since that, since 2022, but between 12 and 18 hours a week, depending on the week. So this program identification team would be a team of two to three staff members who's well-versed in really all of the strategies that could implement a similar program citywide. So it really combines all of those efforts, looking at posting, as you've heard, that ability to post and say when cleanups are occurring, potentially the ability to use the reverse posting in some cases, but also having the resources to be able to conduct those cleanups in all of those areas, not just on the civic campus, but any of our city-owned property or rights-of-way, citywide, would need additional resources in order to accomplish that. So that's this Problem Identification and Intervention Team that's proposed here, and that's why you see this combination of strategies 1, 3, 4, and 17 on this slide. And then, as Jessica just reminded me, the space to hold those things with the presumption that with a heavier enforcement and identification of items, that there would be more items potentially collected and needed for storage. Do you want to add anything else to that particular slide, and just the impacts you've seen on the current pilot and how you would expect that to expand?
Yeah, so the pilot program has been effective. It's doing what it was designed to do, which is to cut down on the encampments that we were seeing on E.B. Raines Park and the civic campus. As Amanda said, it is time-intensive and would need a dedicated team if that was going to be implemented citywide, but it is effective, and we are seeing the benefits of that.
Councilmember Condo, do you have a question on this slide?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
So you said, Jessica, it would require two to three additional people if we were to do it citywide. If we were to just limit the scope of this to the civic center campus, how many additional?
So that's what it's limited to right now, is civic campus and E.B. Raines Park. So it's kind of that whole 120th to City Hall, and then from the east side of E.B. Raines Park, Webster Lake area, all the way over to the tunnel is the area that that's encompassing. And that's what our current staff and staff time, so that 12 to 18 hours a week, is already being dedicated, shared between my team and Amanda's team. If it was to be implemented across the city, I don't think that our teams would be able to handle that. That would need to have a dedicated team.
Gotcha. This whole, the additional activity of the reverse posting, though, if we were to just do that at the civic campus, would that still require additional headcount?
I don't think we're proposing the reverse posting on the civic campus or expansion of the pilot program on the civic campus. That would just be if you wanted to expand that citywide or beyond the three days a week that we're currently doing.
Understand. Thank you.
You're welcome. You do the next slide.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes. Councilmember Brown?
I just have a question. Could we do those, put those signs at the other parks that we have?
So yes, we can do that, but that's really what this piece is identifying, that when we initially proposed that as a pilot program on the civic campus, we weren't sure what resource allocation that was going to take. Now that we've done that over the course of the last year, we've identified that it really is taking about 12 to 18 total hours of staff time, not each, but between one to two members of Jessica's team from Crew, one to two members of the parks team, depending on the day, it's a total of 12 to 18 hours over the course of the week. If we were to expand that, we don't have additional staff resources to draw. We've been able to absorb those 12 to 18 hours within our existing schedules, and that's working for us. Additional time, so if we were to add additional days during the week, if we were to add additional parks, we don't have that additional time without decreasing a level of service somewhere else in the schedule to enhance that service.
Just one more question. Jessica, do you feel that if we, you know, have the sign, we really go after, for lack of a better word, Webster Lake, right? Do you feel that that will just push our unhoused into those other parks that we have around town, or do you think that they're more congregated in Webster Lake because of the shopping center and arc and all of that?
Yeah, so that's a question we're constantly asking ourselves. Why, why is this area so utilized? And we think it has a lot to do with the traffic flow of what's in that area. So across the street, you guys know, there's two hotels that are used for the swap program. We do have food. We do have a lot of low-income apartments in that area that are, people hang out in the park as well as sometimes have different living situations, and they move around quite a bit between different apartment units. And so we have a lot of activity going on in that area of the city. I don't know if you, I don't think that you see that type of activity in other areas of the city. So right now, I don't think that anything that we change in the E.B. Raines Park is going to push anything, because we're already doing this practice in E.B. Raines. It's already happening, and so it's just cutting down on the level of encampments that we're there, seeing there. We still engage with plenty of people over there, but it's not the encampments that you see other places.
What's the second spot? Because I knew about the first hotel that became a spot.
So there's two hotels off of 120th, so there's what used to be the Sure Stay and the Baymont. They both participate in the swap. And then further down on 120th, you have Suburban Extended Stay in Westminster that also participates in the swap program.
Thank you.
Yep. So another thing that we talked-
You can start this one off, and then I will-
Yep. Okay, perfect. Jump in. Yep. So this one is the, another strategy we talked about in 2022, which is to relocate the lunch program. There's a voluntary lunch program that participates in E.B. Raines Park on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and that was grown through an individual who started eating in the park and sharing their food, and then that, and then other passerby saw that and started to chip in food, and then it was organized by a church who grew it onto Tuesdays and a second church who grew it into the Thursdays. We had looked at voluntarily asking those groups if they would like to relocate, if we could find a different location for them. We did find a second location for, a different location over at the Human Services Building. Human Services Building agreed to host their lunches, as well as set up a laundry service truck for them one day a week. The laundry service truck was set up, it's still going once a week. However, the people who are involved in the lunches are not interested voluntarily in moving their lunch program at this point in time. So this is where I'm going to hand it over to Amanda on a, on a idea that's on the table.
Ms. Jessica, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
The faith-based organization that doesn't want to relocate, they give any reasons for just out of sheer convenience they don't want to do it?
It's not out of convenience. I think it's out of the community that they've built there, and the trust that they have gained with the people that are there. I think that they showed disbelief or distrust that anyone would actually follow them to the other building. It's within walking distance, it's what, like a mile and a half or so? But if people weren't walking to E.B. Raines, because we know they're not sleeping in E.B. Raines, then they have to walk to E.B. Raines to get there. So if they just walked the other direction, we don't know if that would show a huge reluctance in participation in the lunches, just because it hasn't been tried. I think the main people who organize the lunches, if they went, other people would follow, because they do, they do street-side sermons during that time. It's run by two faith-based organizations. The people who are participating typically have a faith that goes along with it. There's prayer service before and after the lunches. However, there's also a lot of activity that goes around those lunches. The lunches in the summertime can last for a couple of hours, and then you have the main portion of the lunch, and then people hanging out before and after.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So typically, use in the park is allowed on a drop-in basis. However, we do have a organized group use policy that disallows regular, ongoing use of facilities without a permit. And so this group does not have a permit for space. The pavilions do require a permit for, or a rental or a fee waiver for ongoing, for that, for use, if it's reserved during a specific time period. We do have the ability to disallow use or reject the, a permit for use that does not, does not fit within the best, the best use of the park space. So it would be an option to not issue a permit if it was requested for that space based on an ongoing use in the park that is not in, that is, as I said-
Inconsistent with the community sentiment of the use of that park.
Thank you.
Councilmember Long?
Amanda?
Yes.
How many people are we talking? How many show up at this gathering?
It depends on the day, but the group can have a fairly significant impact on the pavilion.
On a nice day, you can have around 30 to 40 people. On a cold day in the middle of winter, you can have seven people. So it really depends on the day and the time of year. Also, we get more complaints about it during the summertime, when families are out and about using the parks. We get many, much less complaints about it during school years, when people are in school.
I was a little confused. Did you say Tuesday and Thursday?
Correct.
And Fridays are different?
Yeah, so Tuesdays and Thursdays are simply food being provided in the park by two different faith-based organizations. The Tuesdays are bigger than the Thursdays. Then you have the Fridays, which are not associated with food, that's with services, and that's where we do a lot of the case management.
That's what you do.
That's correct. Yep.
Thank you.
But that's happening inside the facility here, not out in the park space.
That's correct.
Councilmember Goff?
Thank you. So Amanda, I mean, this is kind of a difficult situation, I guess, but I'm wondering if we do go for this, you know, the length of requiring and then maybe denying rental of an area for them to just hand out food, what kind of enforcement?
That is a good question.
I mean, I just, I do have a concern about that, because, you know, if they're, these people are really dedicated to gathering, and they have, you know, a community and all this, and they don't want to move, I mean, I'm just, I don't know if you can anticipate or if there's any plans to deal with some resistance around moving.
So typically, our enforcement would be, and I may ask for PD or Cory to jump in here, because typically, our enforcement from a group use policy would be suspension from use of spaces, the not providing a group with a future fee waiver. Like, that's usually a pretty good motivator for groups, right? If we're not providing a fee waiver. We don't have any of that to, to use with a group like this, if we're just simply denying the ability to even rent a space to begin with, so.
And this is probably a good opportunity to just identify that when the city is looking at this, what it can't do is anything that could be seen as criminalizing homelessness. So in terms of enforcement, it would be not only related to this, but it would be consistent enforcement of any other groups that did the same type of use of the park without a permit, and it would have to be consistent enforcement against everybody that had group activities without a permit. So it would be a much broader policy base and not, not geared only towards these groups.
And as Cory said, we've enforced before, but it's typically been a group who's coming and asking for a fee waiver, and so the fee waiver is being rejected because of a failure to follow through with the policy, or a group is being suspended from use, the ability to rent a field because of a failure to follow through with a policy. So it's a little, that's pretty clear-cut.
I just think if we decide to do this, that we need to think that, you know, the here might be worse than the problem, and, you know, we have some kind of plan in mind for all contingent. That was the point of my question.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a question that you may or may not know the answer to, or maybe this is Jessica's question, but has this faith-based organization thought about hosting the lunches themselves at their place of worship or wherever? Just because if they've built such a great relationship with these folks, that they have 30 people showing up, I would assume that, you know, trust-issue-wise, they would follow. It's just a question.
It's a great question. I don't know the answer to it. When I've talked to them about it before, these lunches grew during COVID, so the outdoor space was ideal. We are no longer looking at that, even though last winter, we also approached to see if they would host them in their own spaces. My belief is that the faith-based organizations are not close to that area. So the space that we were asking if they would want to move to is closer than even their faith-based organizations, as far as I know.
At least one of the organizations is not based in North Glenn.
I believe neither of them are.
Oh.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else on that?
Yeah. Councilmember Walker?
Mr. Cory, just curious, I'm just spitballing an idea. If we're getting high complaints in the summertime, and we can't be targeting or criminalizing homelessness, would it be seen as that way if we denied the permits for half the year? Like, when complaints are the highest? Is that a feasible option, or is it all or nothing?
If it was all or nothing, even if limited to time, that's acceptable. But it can't be, I mean, but it's got to be across the board. It can't be geared towards any particular groups. But it can be time-limited.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Long?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It dawned on me just now, listening to our erstwhile attorney make his opine, if we don't enforce this, are we then setting the legal precedent for other not-for-profit worthy groups that might also then avail themselves of our space without permit? Is that what you're fearful of?
Profit, not-for-profit, doesn't matter. It is just, we have to treat everyone the same in this context. Otherwise, if we are focused on certain activities, not only is there the issue of criminalizing homelessness, but there could be First Amendment issues associated with, let's say, enforcing against faith-based organizations and not others. So there's a whole host of reasons we have to be content-neutral and enforce consistently.
Thank you.
And typically, our groups who are coming in and using, say, pavilions, fields, spaces where people are gathering, they want to notify people that they're coming. This is a very informal group, so that word-of-mouth, that gathering, if they're moving within the park, from one pavilion to the next, doesn't seem to be a big deal. Other groups, if they are doing a pop-up class in the park, let's say, which is really where some of this policy even came from, the ability to say, now, if you're meeting in the park, if you're charging people to come to a space, if you're meeting on a regular schedule, if you're gathering with a group of people, there's a series of qualifying criteria, you really need to be renting the space or notifying us, and here's how you do that, because they want to be able to say, we're meeting in, we're meeting at E.B. Raines, we're meeting at this pavilion, we're advertising it, and they want to reserve that space. They don't want to show up and have somebody else be there first. They don't want somebody else to have rented it out from under them. I think this group is a little more willing to say, oh, no, big deal, we'll just move to this other space today. So I think there's kind of some of that social ability to move around that looks different. All right? Anything else on this slide? Okay. Next one. So security guard at the skate park. We heard several inquiries about the, about the skate park that really ranged from removal or relocation, and in some conversations with Police Chief, identified potential for increased security at the skate park. So this is a newly identified strategy of contracted security guard, could allow for seasonal and peak-hour flexibility. The skate park is extremely well-used. As I mentioned, removal or relocation is, would be an extremely costly undertaking. And we really want to acknowledge that the reason the skate park was built 15 years ago is that we wanted to identify a safe place for youth to have that space to, that safe place to be and a sense of belonging, and have concerns that without that, that safe place to be, without that outlet, that likely those behaviors, both the behaviors that are intended to take place at the skate park and the unintended behaviors, have that potential to move from the skate park to the playground, or to our trails, or to our neighborhoods, and, and really relocate those undesirable behaviors as well. The cost of a contracted security guard is certainly something we can look into if this is a strategy that would like us to investigate further. I know, I think, oh, you were right there. You have some costs based on some other contract that has done.
Yeah, so currently, if we use the contract services of our current security services, $39 an hour, you know, to have them. So we can come up with other options. Currently, our park rangers are more of a courtesy patrol, right? Not an enforcement action. So if we decided to go the other way, you know, and if we wanted to issue summonses, they would have to be, you know, a city, you know, employee. Our animal control, who's civilian, they can issue summonses, sort of, have to be something like that. Maybe college students are almost done, you know, at Metro or recruiting, trying to find individuals that someone to finish their degree, not quite all, or not quite ready to be. not quite old enough or not quite ready to be a police officer, but maybe they'd be interested in a part-time job. So there's other avenues we can look at, but there are some costs. But again, that's another maybe recruiting tool as well. You know, once they graduate their college, they can come and work for the Northland Police Department as a full-time officer rather than armed security. And then they'd be trained under us. Again, we would, you know, we don't want them to get in major confrontations, just like we don't, you know, our park rangers, disengage, call the officers. As we hire people, that's one of the impact areas that why we really want to put some officers in that space. So having a security person on those high hours, high use times, but also having a patrol bike unit or something that's going into, I mean, the 117-1, 181-801, the Safeway, our park, our tunnels, you know, where they're patrolling that, they also always have that backup and resource available to them. So, and I agree, you know, one thing, it's so important to provide opportunities for our youth in our community. Like I told everybody before, at one time, we gave out a community grant program where we gave kids passes to the rec center and passes for activities and things to do. If they're not doing something that's structured, and this is not, you know, that, you know, just keep them busy so they're not getting in trouble. And I think, you know, the skate park and everything else, and maybe build in some programming, you know, parks in. But again, we bring that back later, programming for those kids in those areas of those peak times to bring the good kids in where the other kids won't want to be there because of all the good activity. So that's my two cents on security and programming.
And I think part of the reason we identified security or that contracted piece or alternatives rather than officers was just based on the stresses that PD is already feeling and that you've already heard a lot about in terms of being able to maintain that staffing level. So looking at what are those alternatives to be able to provide some additional security, additional supervision without additionally taxing the staff that we have.
Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just curious whether as part of the construct here, you consider partnerships with like, say, Big Brother or Big Sister, or for that matter, any other NGOs or faith-based organizations where they can provide, you know, some wholesome sort of good mentorship, if you will. You know, not only just going the security route, but at least trying to find people that are good role models for these younger folk.
I think that's important. I think we have some programming pieces that are happening that we can always expand and grow on. But based on what we've seen, where our challenges have been, even with the park ranger program, right? The ranger program is identified as, as Chief mentioned earlier, as that kind of first line just deterrent and opportunity for seeking compliance, but through education, through being a presence in the park. And we've got some significant disrespect for that because there's a lack of enforcement. So the reason that you're seeing this strategy is because there's a need to step up the level of enforcement.
Okay, understand.
Councilmember Brown?
My question has to do with the last time you came before us, Chief. You explained to us that we had, you know, like this Lord of the Flies thing going on over at the skate park. Do we feel that any of that, you were going to put an officer, you know, we had the one that rode the bike, the one, I think it was that one Saturday or whatever. Have we seen any improvement in that?
I, you know, I will talk, I have, it hasn't come to my attention, so I will do research on it. But I think, you know, some of the individuals that caused problems, you know, putting a lot of pressure on them. So I'll have to do more research on that to really get you a good answer if we've seen a decrease since school started, most definitely. We've seen a decrease. But I will, I will check to see what types of calls for service that we've had in the last month or two to see. But I can tell you that, well, you guys know, that first couple of months of the summer was, you know, there was a group of kids causing us a lot of trouble over there. We arrested some, some had, you know, we issued summonses to some. So they had consequences, you know, to some of that behavior. So most likely, that reduced as well. But I'll, I'll get the exact numbers and, you know, the answer for you, though.
Okay, that would be perfect, because I haven't had any calls. So that's usually a really good sign. Pyro Fest, I did have a couple of residents, but I forgot to ask. You know what I mean? From over there in those townhouses and stuff? But I forgot to ask mostly because I just probably, you know, wanted to enjoy the day.
Councilmember Long?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a thought, I don't know if it makes any sense or not. If we put a timeline on it with a curfew and put it on the parents, such as that the parental responsibility, custody of a minor 18 years old or younger, shall be responsible if the person shows up in violation of the curfew hours that midnight set. Let's just say for sake of argument, midnight to 5:30 or 10 at night to whatever makes sense, 6 o'clock in the morning, whatever you make. I'm just throwing that out as a possibility.
Well, we've issued curfew tickets to the juveniles and the parents are notified and made aware of that ticket. I haven't issued a summons to the parent for allowing their child to curfew. So that's something I'd have to talk to Cory about and see if there's any other jurisdictions that are doing something similar.
Just a thought.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, the time for determining where the skate park is located has passed and that cost is way too expensive to relocate it or get rid of it. And it's sad to even think of that because it was for that purpose, right, to give our youth a place to hang out. With that being said, I will say that just doing random searches, you know, something popped up on this longboarding and skateboarding place that kind of writes reviews. And there were a lot of great reviews for the skate park, like it has such unique features. But one thing they mentioned was very crowded with rude, rambunctious kids that were up to no good at 9:00 PM. And they went the next morning and had the park all to themselves. So I think having that security is important. I'd love to see that programming piece and activating that space for the, its intended purpose in the first place. So I'm with Chief on that. I think I mentioned this a couple of council meetings ago, like some type of, like, I know, like an SRO program or a mentorship program or something that makes connections with those youth. Even bringing in maybe an expert skateboarder, you know, to teach some lessons to these kids and get it activated for the kids that want to use it and push, or maybe be a role model for the kids that aren't doing so well. And then my question related to that is, are, from just this review that I read, are the kids that are causing the issues, are they like in the skate park area or just around it? Are they preventing kids who want to use the skate park for fun?
Most of them that are causing problems do not use the skate park.
They're not using the skate park, okay.
They are on the fringe of the skate park. So that's my understanding.
Right.
That's been our observation as well. It's not, it's not necessarily one or the other, totally cut and dry. It's, also doesn't mean that you have a skateboard in your hand and you're being the most polite either. We have certainly seen our fair share of those who are skating and not choosing to follow the rules or be very respectful of staff, as I watched Jesse try to clear the skate park so they could do construction and maintenance a couple of weeks ago. And watched the video that he took as they spoke to him in response to the clearing. Because it wasn't very kind at all, and I will not repeat the words that were said on that. That being said, most of the reports that we're seeing, most of what we're observing are not necessarily teens with skateboards in their hands. It's other individuals who are hanging out in the area and causing trouble.
And that's exactly my concern and my wish. If we activate that area for what it's intended to be, that'll help, you know, fill it up with the kids that want to use it and prevent some of the unwanted behavior, along with all the SEPTED studies and assessments that are being done, too. That answers my other thoughts. So, thank you.
But overall, can it appear to be a pretty rough crowd? Yeah.
Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Curious, one other, I'm not here to, and I want to see if you all explored this, was installing a camera, a monitoring camera, just to have eyes on that 24/7.
Yes, so those are in design currently. That was the part, came out of SEPTED. So we have a contract out right now. They are working on design of lighting and camera for both the tunnel and skate park.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else on this one? All right, I will turn it over to Allison. The last three strategies are all economic development-related.
All right-ish. So, yeah, as Amanda mentioned, three final additions to the list, all related to our businesses in the area. Strategy 35 and 36 have to do with communication, communication with and between our businesses as well as the community. I think the idea is to kind of expand the team, sharing the good news about Northland. Sometimes people have a tendency when they don't know what to say, maybe things are, so we can help people maybe fill in the blank. I think if we assist with the businesses and some, looking at some ways to assist with positive messaging, increased information and communication, I think is one way that we can look to just improve communication and coordination. I know Strategy 36, I think, has to do with sharing some of our successes in the area when we do have successful law enforcement action, letting folks know that there are, we're aware of what's going on and we're working to address that. Strategy 37 is one we've talked about before, the Washington Point Engagement Process. As Becky mentioned, this is, I'm sorry, Councilmember.
You're okay.
I mentioned, this would be a collaboration with NARA and a consultant to talk with the multiple business owners at the Washington Point Shopping Center to help hear those concerns, develop a plan, respond to the issues that we're seeing with the, kind of the lack of coordination, the lack of conversation with those particular property owners, just by way of some, I think, some history. At one time, there was a common area maintenance agreement amongst all of those property owners and that worked for a while to help take care of signage, updates, irrigation, parking lot lighting, painting, signs, all those things. That fell apart a couple of years ago. The last couple of property owners did pull out of that agreement. So part of our, from an economic development and a NARA standpoint, would be to help them find some strategies to work together better so that not everybody's trying to do their own security, not everybody's trying to do their own patchy parking lot work, let's address everything together. We are finalizing a scope of work and a schedule with a consultant that will be taking to NARA for approval and start that, probably about an eight-week process to open up those conversations and really hopefully hear what people have to say. And I think we'll pay careful attention to making sure that we are giving the opportunity for people to speak freely to us. And I think that's part of having the consultant is to, that they feel like they can speak freely and really, really share their concerns. And then Strategy 38, I think, is really more of a possible outcome. I think we have identified, again, with Washington Point, a need to create a mechanism for them to share in the maintenance and just the, what goes on in the shopping center. And so one option is to establish a business improvement district into which all of those property owners would pay. We could fashion that, fashion that, excuse me, in a number of different ways. It could be fairly minimal, maybe it's just for lighting and property maintenance. Or maybe they have a true, maybe they have some beautification and have some ways that they can work together. So that's, I think that's all pending the outcome of these conversations with the consultant to make sure that we have funding for cooperative property maintenance to increase curb appeal. It's a great shopping center. There's great traffic through there. There's no reason why it can't be, can't be successful. And then if that model works, maybe we'll look at expanding that to other shopping centers in Northland. So, any questions about those three new strategies? I know we've talked about some of those already.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, business improvement district, I think, is a brilliant idea. I know as a business owner, I've said this before, I don't know how they're surviving without CAM because that is how everything gets done, from the parking lot getting paved, to snow being removed, to refacing and redoing how the shopping center looks. So it's very discombobulated having so many different owners. And I just think that this is a brilliant way to try to bring those together, along with that collaboration with NARA. Because once that starts to improve, I've seen this firsthand, moving into business areas that are, you know, considered rundown or whatnot. And just putting businesses in there and refacing adds new life to it, brings, you know, brings new people in there to kind of re, I love that word tonight, I guess, reactivate the space, reactivate the businesses. So I just want to say, it's crucial. It's crucial for these businesses to survive and, you know, to bring people back in there. So, great job. Really great job. Thank you.
Is there more, I'm sorry, can I?
Councilmember Brown?
Is, I mean, you have Strategy 38, new strategy with proper property owning, owner consent. Is there more background? I mean, just so that I can read it later, what that new strategy really is? Or is that new strategy what you have at the second bullet?
It is the establishment of a business improvement district. Incidentally, it would require property owner, I believe it's 51% of the, I'm sure Cory will correct me if I'm wrong, but 51% of the number of property owners would have to consent and 51% of the assessed valuation would have to consent. And then we could help, help them negotiate an agreement amongst themselves. So that would be our goal.
The worst part about Washington Point was that the, they did have a management company at one time and they stole all their money and went away. So they were very cranky about getting back into having, you know, one, yeah, they left him in the middle of a snowstorm and just quit. So I'll be curious to see how they, how they respond. I think it's been enough time now that they're ready to look at it again. But it'll be interesting to see how they respond.
The consultant may get an earful.
And practically speaking, a business improvement district is much different than property management. It is a, it is a type of a governmental entity, essentially. They would agree to assess themselves to pay for these types of improvements. So there's much more formality and it's not, it's not hiring a property manager, it's actually forming an entity that manages this as a form of government.
Is there a cost? There obviously would have to be a cost associated with it.
Yes, they assess themselves, those costs, on their property tax.
Oh, that one. Okay. So like an entertainment district that has a higher tax on it? So that's what that would be? As you said, property tax, I'm a little confused.
Nothing to do with an entertainment district. There is no taxes associated with an entertainment district.
I'm trying to understand what you said about on their property tax.
Yes, so when Allison mentioned 51% of the property owners and 51% of the assessed value, essentially it is a mechanism where they would agree to assess themselves on their property tax bill for the cost of this.
Handle it. Because I still don't understand it, because, I don't know, I've never heard of it before. So I'll be interested.
There are, for example, Colfax has a business improvement district. There are business improvements in downtown Denver. There is a business improvement in this, or there was in the city of Blackhawk. So it's a fairly common mechanism for, for business owners taking it upon themselves to make the improvements.
And see, I thought, the reason I had said entertainment district is because I thought it was going to be a tax that was collected. But that, yeah, okay, never mind. We'll talk about that later. I was just trying to make.
Instead of a sales tax, it's done through the property tax process.
Thank you.
Well, with that, I guess, staff is looking for direction from council. Not anything on the new strategies that were provided or any of the past strategies that are necessarily going to be solved and resolved and finalized tonight, but really getting some feedback from council. from council on, especially the new eight items or so that were presented tonight. If you have feedback on things that you would encourage us to pursue and get more information on, or if there are strategies that you're like, eh, not, not that interested in. So, I'll pause there and allow you to discuss.
All right. Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I'll kick off, and I think it's probably easier for me to say which strategies I'm not really interested in pursuing. I would say seven, which is Slide 17, and then the combined strategies of 1, 3, 4, 17, which would be Slide 9. All others, I would be in favor. And then I do have an idea, but I'll reserve that until others provide their input.
So, I'm just trying to pick, now it's Councilmember Condo, so Slide 17, or no?
The ones that I would say no to are Strategies 7, and Strategies 1, 3, 4, and 17, which are all bundled together on.
So you're on the graph, right?
Yes.
Okay, because I was looking at the.
I'm on the slides too. And then the 1, 3, 4, 17?
17, known as the PII team, the Problem Identification and Intervention Team.
Okay. Anybody else want to weigh in? Councilmember Brown?
I have a statement, I guess. I'm a little disappointed that some of these strategies that have a cost associated with them didn't come before budget time, because now we're looking at anything with a cost, really basically going out to 2025. So that's a little bit of a frustration.
Is that the, can we get clarification? Is that the case? Like, are any of these embedded costs? Or are they all new costs that will have to wait till 2025?
Not that they would have to be added in 2025, but these were not part of the budget. These discussions happened after that process of things, of items that were brought forward. If this, if these were items that council desired, we would.
From my perspective, it's hard to say what I approve of, because it's not in the budget process. So the funds would, could come through appropriation, but then our general fund is going down. So, it is hard for me at this time to really dig into it. I mean, I guess I could say anything that doesn't cost me anything, you know, that isn't already built into the project is really about the only thing we can really do, or we risk reducing the general fund again by bringing in some of these larger projects.
So Jason, can you specify, I'm looking at the slide deck, and I see, looks like Strategy 1 has a cost, and maybe in the slide deck, it's not. How many of these things have an added cost?
Sorry, excuse me. How, how many is that your question?
Yeah, or which ones, I mean, the only ones I see, I see Strategy 1 has a cost on the slide deck.
Is it possible just to give a little phrase of what that is, though we're not always constantly looking?
Yeah, because what's a slide deck?
I'm just scrolling up and down the slide. So, on page 19 of the slides, it says, "Discussed and not selected," parentheses, "cost." I'm assuming that's Strategy number one. The slide is not clear. So, there it is. That's what I was looking at.
I think if you go up to the graph, you can better, or the spreadsheet, determine.
What is Strategy 1? Okay, that's, remove all abandoned items that appear to be trapped.
If I may jump in, I think the two with most significant costs associated with them, and others may comment if I'm missing any, are the Problem Identification and Intervention Team, and the Security Guard at the skate park. Are there any I missed?
Shopping carts that we could possibly store?
Those are the two that have the most significant cost associated. Most of the others are, are policy-related.
Except for if we were with the shopping carts, we have to build a new building at M&amp;O.
I think we'd be able to find space one way or another.
Problem identification, okay. Okay. Councilmember Goff?
Well, I guess that's kind of what I was going to suggest, is that if, we've had so many things presented, and it's hard to make a decision without knowing cost. So, unless, I mean, I think maybe tonight might be more helpful if people said things they absolutely did not, or did not want to move forward on, and then that maybe staff could come back with more details and costs of the other things, the remaining things. I don't know, I don't know if that's a more useful strategy or not. There's a lot to cover here.
I mean, yeah, I agree. I mean, cost, benefit.
Well, and maybe this is not anything we can decide tonight, because I'm looking at this too, getting super confused.
And we want, one possible broad direction is to be as proactive as possible, using all of these strategies, and to the extent there are costs associated with it, to come back with the costs associated with those. But for those that don't have costs associated with it, the general direction to be as proactive as possible gives us a lot of work to do to come back with kind of that menu of items that we can, from, from both policy and enforcement perspectives.
Councilmember Long?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support what Cory just said, makes common sense. And with all due respect, we've had our subject matter experts pour over this and a task force working very hard to follow through what was said last September 2022. So, I'm in agreement with what Cory just stated, is a good common sense way to go forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Goff?
So, my, I would say something similar. I'm just a little concerned about that this is too much, if we just say, do everything. That's my only concern. And if it's just a, I mean, if it's a matter of like, you want some priorities, and then, you know, you'll know, like, what things to work on and what order, or, I mean, it kind of seems like we've been working on all of these things a little bit. So if that's what we, you know, I think being proactive, because this problem is only going to get worse, is a good strategy, but I want it to be manageable.
Are you asking them priority?
Well, no, I'm wondering if, if, if we just say yes, what Cory said, we want you to be proactive, is that, is this possible for our staff to do all of these things?
Well, for example, I would have a list of policy recommendations to bring forward in the form of ordinances.
Okay.
That would not have cost, would not have enforce, the cost would be kind of the regular police department enforcement. Shopping carts in the right of way being a good example. You know, some things that we haven't discussed, but looking at our medians again, to find out those medians that are more dangerous, and supplementing our existing median ordinance. You know, other things about physical obstructions of the rights of way that we've discussed. Things like that, that are ordinance changes, that are aligned with being more proactive, would have no cost.
Well, then, to follow up on that, then, I, I think that I'd like to hear, have you come, do that, yes. And then, the only thing I have some question about at this point, I'm really intrigued by the reverse posting, that maybe that's something we either should hold off on, or, you know, do some more research on.
Well, I think it's associated also with the cost of.
That's true.
The PII team. I mean, that is one we know is a definite cost.
So, I guess what I'm struggling with, so Councilmember Condo picked us off, right, very succinctly with, I sup, you know, these are ones that I'm struggling with. But he didn't say why. He didn't say because it was the cause. And so, to just go forward and say, yeah, do it, unless it costs us money, like, that just feels really vague to me, and it's not in line with the presentation. So, that's where I'm confused. Like, do you want strategies not to proceed with, and why additional ideas from council, and strategies to implement or further explore? I mean, that's what the slide says. But Cory, you kind of brought it down to proactive or not, do you want us to do something or not? I, it does, it's just not aligning?
In addition to the slides, you have the spreadsheet, that has a whole host of, and, and that's why I'm bringing it to that level. We certainly had a discussion in executive session about legal constraints.
Right.
But subject to those legal constraints, there are a lot of things that the city can do, that it has the resources for, that we want the direction on whether to be more proactive.
Okay. However, Councilmember Brown just made a really good point. We don't know if we have the resources to do these things. Because I'm okay, I think they're all great ideas, but we can't afford them necessarily. I'm not jumping into the budget process right now and jacking it all up, to be honest. And so, like, Councilmember Brown just made a really good point. Councilmember Condo didn't tell us why he didn't like those. Maybe they have nothing to do with the finances. So, I'm just trying to figure out how to facilitate this conversation, so that we're getting everyone's true opinions, so that we can give staff clear direction. Does that make sense? So Councilmember Condo, can I go back to you?
Yeah. So, I certainly was not in favor of the PII initiative because of the cost.
The cost, okay.
Seven, Strategy 7, I just figured that one is so vague, and given the squishiness of the definition of paraphernalia, would be kind of tough. Now, the other strategy that requires money would be the security guard at the skate park, and yes, even though that is a cost, I figured that goes into the green bucket, which would be further explore.
God, thank you. I appreciate the clarity.
And all the other strategies that I did not mention would be in that green bucket, implemented, further explored.
Thank you. Councilmember Goff, do you want to chime in again?
I think I agree with Councilmember Condo, my own, and then just my comment about the reverse posting. That's something I have real, but I wouldn't want to, at this point.
You don't want to do reverse, so which one was that?
Oh, it was, it was about the.
It's part of the, it's part of the PII. It would have to be. We'd need the resources to be able to do that.
So that's just number 17. So, like, that's separate from 1, 3, and 4. That's my question. Right? So 17.
I didn't, I did not break down PII into the four substrates.
Okay. How do you feel about 1, 3, and 4?
Can you hold me a moment, please, ma'am?
Okay.
One, I'm good. I think that's, there's no incremental cost there. Three, I'm also good. I don't see any incremental cost there, as well as, four, I think, has already been budgeted, since we do that right now at the Civic Center.
Okay. So we're really looking at cost items. So 17, which includes the reverse.
The reverse.
Posting. Is that broken out in its own number?
Yes, that doesn't really spell it out there, but when they did the presentation, it was on the slide. So there's, they.
That's what I'm trying.
Yeah, they don't exactly overlap, or, or some are like combined.
Okay. Councilmember Brown?
I, um, I still struggle, but what Cory said to me made sense. If it can be covered with an ordinance, then those would be the cherry pickers that we pick off the bottom, right? Anything that I have concerns about are cost-related, right? So 16, 17, a couple other ones. But it seems like Councilmember Condo said, we are on these other ones, we have, already have a strategy in place or a direction that we're going. So staying in that direction would probably be a really good idea. I think that everything that Allison brought forward should continue in that mode. You know, I think that everything that you brought forward fits, fits your wheelhouse and where we should go. And there's, never mind, just a little bit of cost, but we budgeted for it. So, I think if it requires an ordinance, for instance, shopping carts in the right of way, and all we have to do, not all we have to do, I don't want to sound lazy, but what we have to do is do an ordinance, those should be designated first. That's what I was asking about a priority list. In my mind, that's what it would have done for me. So, that's my opinion.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I don't necessarily have a read, just looking at it, but of course, cost is an issue. So going through the whole thing, Strategy number seven, I would support, because I don't believe there's any cost to it in terms of involuntary and/or emergency commitments, right? That's just more of, more partnerships, or, I don't know if that's IGAs, or how we work that out, right?
So looking at the EC and the IC, the emergency commitment and involuntary commitment process, it would be more of a practice change for what we are currently doing, when we are facing someone with substance use disorder. So right now, our choices are to cite them with our city ordinances, which is a way that we, it's a tactic we've been using. It's also a long-term one. So this would be looking at the clinical problem of what they're doing, and getting them to the appropriate resources regarding their substance use disorder.
Okay, thank you. When you put it that way, it seems to me that this is a very logical thing to do, because I don't feel that just citing people is necessarily helping them. They need detox, possibly, and other measures. So for that reason, and there is no cost associated to it, I believe that this is something.
The cost associated would only be time commitment by putting those documents together, but that's staff. And, and then there's the legal analysis that Cory is doing, on what that looks like when a city is making, being a petitioner.
Yeah, for what, for what it's worth, I think it is likely that the emergency commitment is eminently doable. The involuntary commitment may be more difficult.
But it also might help somebody survive. So for that reason, I still support number seven. Strategy number 12, shopping carts in right of way, I would support that as well, that would be an ordinance change. The 1, 3, 4, and 17 is the one we were kind of a little bit confused of, about 1, 3, and 4 are already in the works. 17, I really want to support, but that is the one apparently that possibly comes with an additional cost. So for that reason, yeah. Relocating lunch program, that doesn't cost us anything, so I would say pursue Strategy number 22, and working with this based, the faith-based organization, easy for me to say. Number 31, I feel is so important, given all of the issues we are hearing from at the skate park, but we definitely need to know what that cost is. So I don't know if there's a way to proceed with just part of that activation piece at least.
Further explore.
Further explore, green. I'm just going through. And then the business, 35 through 38, yeah, absolutely. I don't see any issues with those moving forward. There. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Can I just make a comment on the relocation of the lunch program? Because that, what, what I was hearing Cory say is there could be some legal issues there with, I mean, that we've, Jessica's already worked with them, they don't want to do it voluntarily. We're going to be having to devise a, an ordinance or a procedure that doesn't allow people to use our, you know, car. That's not, that's not specifically limited just to this particular activity, is that right?
It will be utilizing our existing permitting procedures and looking at those to better implement them, but the, the procedures already exist.
And they're already implemented with other groups.
Right.
We just, we very, the only piece of it that we've seldom used is denying, generally we're using it to get someone to pay for a permit, not to deny use of the space.
So is that an ordinance?
No, the ordinance already exists.
So, I'm going to say that I feel like the, the team probably has heard the desired direction, as far as, it doesn't sound like there's anything that was absolutely, there was no, nothing to take off the table.
Possibly. I just want to make sure that everyone gets a chance to weigh in, because we haven't heard from some council members, so I just, I don't want to discount anybody. Councilmember Burns, are you still there?
I'm here.
Did you want to weigh in?
I agree with the discussion that's been going on. I support the group and sort of like echo Councilmember Brown and what you were saying, Madam Mayor, of just like disrupting the budget process. and what you were saying, Madam Mayor, of just like disrupting the budget process at the moment. Um, but I support the strategies that have been put forth from staff, especially those regarding, you know, changing permitting around the lunch on Tuesdays and Thursdays, um, especially since it's not like a city sanctioned event that we are hosting. Um, yeah. So I, I think like a lot of these ones that are sort of low hanging fruit are, are already in the process of moving forward, are best to continue to move forward with.
Thank you. Councilmember Hiramio?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So since we're on the subject of the relocation lunch program, um, I mean, I, I feel like for a long time, they'd been, you know, doing scheduled and structured programming essentially. And if anybody else, I feel like they would be charged for that. And that's how, that's how I feel like with that whole situation is they should have to pay if they're going to be utilizing the space scheduled, structured, and it's programmed nonprofit organization. Uh, so that was just on that conversation, and are we just going down the list of like? Yes, no?
Whatever you want to share.
Okay, all right. So uh, yes, I am in favor of communication with businesses. I feel like that's done a great job. I've seen a great improvement with Washington Point. Um, so that, that's a yes also to Washington Point Engagement. Uh, Business Improvement District, I think that's something that we can really imply, um, uh, really implement even across the street at a, is that a, I forget the name of that look, um, business location, but just to the east. So I think that's another great opportunity. And um, let's see, uh, uh, let's see, drug use paraphernalia, I mean, I'd say yes to that. Because that's saying like, if you have used and you have it on you, that's, that says that you're basically guilty, right? Like you've done it, so. Okay, uh, strategy 12, implementing ordinance to do, disallow shopping carts on public right of way. I'd say yes to that. And then strategies 1, 3, uh, 1 and 3, they also have, you know, they're already in code. They already have them listed there, so. And this is already stuff that's already in motion now. Say yes, I think we're doing great work there. I feel like the city's been cleaning up quite a bit, especially during the summer when it's been a hotspot. I think that's all of that sweeps and everything has been great. I've noticed a great difference, absolutely, in Webster, Webster Lake, AB Rains Park. Um, let's see, 17 implementation of, um, that's, that's one that I'm kind of not sure on. I've just heard different perspectives, and that one I'm still up in the air about, 17. But yeah, I've just been trying to go down the line and looking at what was recommended by staff. And so far, that's where I'm at, I'm still trying to figure out some of the other ones, but that's my perspective on those.
Okay, well, it sounds like where council had landed. And we haven't heard from Councilmember Walker, I believe. Um, do you want to add?
Just real quick, I appreciate it. I support everything Mayor Protim said. Uh, I'd see some more information on 17. I fully support 22, 31. Uh, and I have one small ask, and that's uh, not let number 34 fall on the back burner because that small little fence, section of fence is the gateway to a massive area for the homeless congregation, and they're a problem. I remember cleaning up that hillside. Please don't let that one fall. I know it's not in our court right now, but don't let her go. Thank you.
Now, I'm glad you brought that up, that's a good one. Um, so I mean, it sounds like 17 is the big one, because it has the biggest cost. And it's not currently in the budget. But people want to explore the cost of the security guard, but not necessarily implement it right of way. And then most everything else, Councilmember condo, I think we did have support for seven, even though it was-
Now say seven.
You're good with that, okay. So now seven's ready to go. Okay. Jason, you good?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, I think we're done with that discussion item. Okay, so the agenda, we're going to move into an executive session. The agenda was revised this morning to add an executive session for the 111th place flooding issues. This topic was added today because the city did not have the ability to know of the necessity for an executive session on the matter until today. I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session number one pursuant to section 4.5D of the City of Northland Home Rule Charter for legal consultation and advice regarding A, Justice Center Foundation issues, B, the 111th place flooding issues, C, quasi judicial process, and number two, pursuant to section 4.5A of the City of Northland Home Rule Charter for personnel matters regarding council appointee evaluation.
So moved. Second.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
Councilmember Burns, how do you vote?
Yes.
I will close that vote, and the motion to adjourn to executive session passes with one no vote cast by Councilmember Walker.
Not feeling it, huh?
I think 111, we talk.
Oh, I hear what you're saying.
I can't support them all.
Oh, I hear what you're saying. Do you want that on the record?
Sure, I, I, the reason I voted no is because I believe the 111th flooding issues need to be brought out in the public.
Ah, excellent. All right, we will adjourn to the executive sessions.
Thank you.